Dr. Hesberg, the public has been admitted.
Okay. Got it. Mr. Seisland, I'd like to have a roll call of the members of the DDA.
Okay, Chairman Hesberg.
Present.
Board Member Saaf.
Present.
Board Member Corbin.
Present.
Board Member Farhat.
Present.
Board Member Kilgus.
Present.
Board Member Ochab.
Present.
Board Member Richner.
Present.
Board Member Wixson.
Present.
And Mayor Hodges.
Present.
There being a a quorum, we've satisfied the requirements of our bylaws for a quorum. I would like to take a moment of your time to tell you about the sad news over the weekend that Lena Carlisle passed away. As I understand it, she was found deceased in her condominium next door to the DIO, lying on her bed. So although her passing was unexpected, it apparently was sudden, unexpected. Lena has spent many years on the DDA. I've always found her to be to be an excellent source of valuable information. She was an interesting lady in that no matter what I did wrong, she never corrected me in public. But she would then call a couple of days later and say, I have a little to talk to you about, Doctor. And then she'd lay out my errors. But she was always polite about it. And and I always respected her because because her additions were always pertinent. She was very loyal to the wellness of the city of Rose Point Park. And actually, although she didn't say much at meetings, she was really a very thoughtful person. And some of her ID new ideas that initially I thought were kooky turned out to be very solid. So I think she was a sensible person, prudent person, an honorable person, a very elegant lady. And I just am greatly saddened by her loss. And if it meets the approval, which I will not call for, other than to say, we'll now have a moment of silence for the passing of Lena Carlisle. We will now rejoin the agenda of the meeting of December the 8th of the Downtown Development Authority meeting. This is an informational meeting to begin the evening. Mr. Seisland, do you wish to comment?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hesberg, members of the board and the public. Tonight, as part of a requirement, the DDA has to hold an informational meeting regarding activities of the Downtown Development Authority. This is our recap since June 9th of this year. The MKSK Parking Study, which is also the master plan consultant for the city, has been completed. This board adopted its 2122 fiscal year budget. Safety enhancements of traffic islands on Jefferson by our Department of Public Works, removing shrubs that were in the way of being able to turn left from Jefferson. City Master Plan is ongoing at this time, and that's in its public comment period. And there also is a survey online still for those residents that would like to provide their the DDA Business Improvement Grant was approved by this board at its last meeting, which would help for facade improvements and other architectural landscaping measures within the business district. The Gross Point Park Business Association was established, which not only it covers the DDA, but also the Tax Increment Finance Authority, Fairfax in that area, as well as over on Mac and Cadu. And the Public Safety Department, because there's been a shortage and a difficulty of finding work staff, they've been assisting with crossing guard responsibilities. And this is something that Chief Gerald and Deputy Director Bostek have been working on. And at this time, that's all I have for an informational recap. Would be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Seeing none at this time, I will move into if there is public comment regarding the informational meeting of the DDA. Seeing no hands raised, Dr. Hesberg, we can adjourn the informational review session.
Some hope.
Is there a support?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Looks like maybe we might have some technical difficulties. Oh, there's Chairman Hesberg. Hesberg, can you call to order the special meeting of the DDA? Okay, I will do so. I'm calling to order the special meeting of the DDA. Moving on, we're going to move into the adoption of the November 17 minutes. I would like to make one correction before the adoption of these minutes that I do have Board Richner in that I would like to replace Richner with Kilgus. And other than that, I would look to a motion for approval with that amendment. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All board members in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None opposed? Okay. Next, I'm going to move into public comment of agenda items. I have no written public comment at this time, and I will give a minute to see here if there's any spoken public comment by hands raised. Okay. Give me one second to share my screen. Okay. Greg Donnelly, if you could unmute yourself, please state your name, city of residence, and please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Greg Donnelly, resident of Rose Point Park, of course. So I wanted to say tonight that the $200,000 that's pledged by the Urban Renewal Initiatives Foundation for the proposed parking lot at Jefferson and Lake Point that is on tonight's agenda is is a fraction of what a parking lot that size would cost if it is done in a way that deals appropriately with stormwater and is friendly to our natural environment. A parking lot of this size with appropriate stormwater infrastructure could easily cost many times that, easily over a million dollars. That's that's a rather large area. And given that Gross Point Park has also had such severe flooding issues in recent years, I would hope this would be a huge concern for everyone in that any new parking lots would be designed in a way that deal with stormwater appropriately and responsibly for both our environment and for our residents. So in addition, I'd like to say that it can't be true that Gross Point Park needs all this new parking along Jefferson and additional parking along the Kirchvoll corridor. They're really quite close to each other and not hard to traverse, whether on foot or by other means. So it's worth noting that both the parking study that has already shown the Kirchvoll corridor to have an access to parking, you know, is notable. And that just yesterday, the Tifa Board approved tearing down another house at 1166 Maryland to make way for parking. And that is less than two blocks from this site of another proposed parking lot. So why build more parking in both these locations? If Jefferson and Lake Point is actually the best spot for new parking, then couldn't the K line trolley be used to transport overflow patrons back and forth from the Kirchvoll corridor? And and why, you know, why are we tearing down homes if for for parking, like if anything, we need more housing in this neighborhood? So finally, I'd like to say that if parking is to be built at Jefferson and Lake Point, it should be done in a way that allows for future development of the site to happen easily. This should include things like commercial and retail space facing Jefferson on the first floor, as well apartment as apartments and condos, maybe for our aging population on the upper floors. Please, please have the foresight needed to make this corner of our town an amazing asset for everyone and for the long term and not just another surface parking lot. Thank you.
This is Philip Hesberg. I don't know how I got shut out, but I'm on by telephone. And I'm not sure what that was. Was that public comment?
Yes, Chairman Hesberg, that's public comment agenda items. I'm going to see if we have any more public comment at this time.
Okay.
Chairman Hesberg, I have no further public comment at this time.
There being no further comment, we will call a question. All those in favor of accepting this presentation, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Hold on, I don't think there's a motion on that.
Yeah, are we just looking at the presentation or I'm confused about what we're
Next agenda item is the parking study review, which doesn't require a motion, it's a presentation by the director.
Okay. If that's the if that's the case, then we can call for adjournment of the informational review session. Is that the case?
We did complete that, Dr. Hesberg, while you were having some technical difficulties. So I'm going to go ahead and give a brief recap right now for the parking study review. And then
Okay.
And after that, this this board, it's it's simply just a review of the parking study. So with that said, I'd like to thank the board members again, MKSK especially for their hard work regarding this master plan in addition to this parking study. And so with that said, I'd like to discuss that the consultants with volunteer assistance conducted parking counts on different days and times to measure level of impact within the DDA district. The study provides the city and Public Safety Department ways to consider improvement of meter options, enforcement rates, transit options, electrical vehicle charging stations, loading flexible zones, parking policies, and an ad wayfinding as well, which is for addressing public parking and entering entering into our city. I've had several discussions, I know most recently who's been impacted is Board Member Richner has had some difficulties too of people entering into Gross Point Park and addresses. So we improve upon there. So thank you to Board Member Richner as well, along with MKSK. In the short term, what we're looking at is that we need to replace our existing meter parking along Jefferson and side streets and in the public parking lots with updated meter pay station technology. This parking should be striped as well. Our DPW has done a great job over the years of fixing these meters, but they're beyond its lifetime right now. And so we're going to have to work on that. We want to include EV parking spaces in the City Hall parking lot. Add additional bike racks and or more existing bike racks to more prominent and visible locations, which includes public parking lots. Enhance existing crosswalks to improve and promote pedestrian circulation. Provide proper wayfinding signage for the public lot located on the north side of Jefferson. And that should say for Henry Ford. It's not, this lot is not currently signed as public parking, should also include pay station meters. Long term, coordinate with property owners to improve access management and traffic circulation. Coordinate with property owners to enhance parking with proper screening and buffering and reconfigure parking in some areas. Incentives could be provided if landscaping includes green infrastructure to help mitigate stormwater runoff. These are just a brief recap of overall parking study. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments from the board members.
Nick, I had a question. When we're talking about enhancing the parking meter technology, are we looking at doing like an app to pay like some of the other local cities do?
So right now, what we have, we have a system called Park Mobile. You'll see on them, they're just these green stickers right now. They work for now that you can go ahead and, you know, input your credit card and such. But something that I discussed with the Tifa yesterday is I already worked with a interviewed a company that's doing a smart metering over on Royal Oak, Hamtramck and Flint that not only is looking at having credit cards that you could input into the meter, you can have coins as well. It would have screens on there that could potentially advertise businesses or city city news and announcements. And it's actually pretty fascinating that they're they're looking at two of having bollards that show lights, green for open parking spaces, red for not open, red for you better go pay the meter or you're going to get a ticket. And, you know, so this is something that is part of smart technology moving forward. I'm really looking at, you know, for the city of Gross Point Park. And it's time we move forward with that. So Board Member Ochab, it's something that we're going to be working on further, seeing if there's more companies interested. And I think it's in our best interest as a city overall, Tifa, DDA, Mac, Cadu, that we seriously look into this.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, can I also ask, is the DDA going to be expected to provide funding for some of the recommendations? And we have a budget for that? If so.
Some of this right now, these are part of this review tonight is just suggestions that are available for us at a later meeting. So at later meetings, I imagine we will discuss further potential, some of these short term and long term improvements that further we might be able to allocate within our capital improvements and or a traffic line item of our budget.
Yeah, I noticed some of the recommendations ask the property owners to make improvements and certainly would want to be sensitive to where the funding would come from to support those improvements.
Correct, we certainly want to uphold our obligation as well, you know, in helping the business owners.
Hey, Nick, I'm curious, what what percentage of our budget do the meters bring in and or what dollar amount do they bring in annually?
With the city general fund, it's not much right now. I couldn't give you an exact number off the top of my head. I know we've seen a reduced amount, obviously with COVID over, you know, the last year or so. And in addition to, you know, there's Charlevoy, for example, does not have any meters. There's a lot of broken meters on Mac. There's a couple on Kirchvall, so we are losing revenue overall as a community. And it's something that if we want to be able to upgrade our facilities and our parking that, you know, it's very important that we look to update these. But Board Member Kilgus, I could not give you an accurate number off the top of my head. But I can get back with you.
And do these do these these new smart technology or otherwise? I'm assuming that there is an install cost for those or is there some sort of a revenue share that you do with the people that put those in?
Well, for example.
Along those lines?
Yeah, the the company I looked with right now, they they're a revenue sharing. So they would actually install all of the equipment in that they would look at a revenue share between the city and and them. So it's something that we're going to have to evaluate and especially with other companies too, how they, you know, get their revenue stream. Or do we have the budget to be able to provide those capital costs? So that's something we're going to keep exploring. And I know it's very important as well, public safety, that we update these.
Okay. Thank you.
There being no further discussion, shall we move then on to item number 10? The memorandum of understanding between the DDA and the Urban Renewal Fund.
Chairman Hesberg?
One comment.
I'm sorry, Chairman Hesberg, you can't see because you're on your phone. But I did want to just add, I think it's worth noting that we had a partnership with the community by using volunteers to help support the process. And then also the funding came from the donor community. I don't know if City Manager Seisland, do you'd like to point some of the specifics out of those two items?
You know, it's something I think we can get into with the next agenda item. And one of the gentlemen I see is on screen right now, Scott Cave from the SCOP Center. He'll be happy to discuss further and but, you know, I'll go into it now. We, you know, working with the SCOP Center and Urban Renewal, this is something that has been discussed about parking in the area relation to the future SCOP Center. Working with my partners at the Urban Renewal Initiative, you know, we discussed that, you know, we really need to look at the impact of the potential of parking. And for those on the residential streets and working with the great group of Scott Cave, Jamie Ray Turnbull and others, they were able to conduct a parking study by MKSK. And so I would like to thank those for being a partner in doing so.
Thank you.
And then moving on, Chairman Hesberg, we're at the memorandum of understanding, DDA and URF. Before I do so, I do have Scott Cave from Urban Renewal Initiative and Jamie Ray Turnbull, who are going to provide a brief PowerPoint slide. And so Scott, take it away.
Hey, thank you, Nick. Greatly appreciated. And thank you, Chairman Hesberg, Director Seisland, Mayor Hodges and the board members for allowing us to provide a project update on the SCOP Center. My name is Scott Cave, owner's rep of the Urban Renewal Initiative Foundation. And with me is my partner, Jamie Ray Turnbull, spokesperson and interim director. At this point, Nick just confirming that all can see the presentation material on my shared screen. Okay, terrific. With that being said, I'd like to introduce Jamie Ray Turnbull.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for having us at the DDA meeting tonight. We'd like to just go through this briefly to give those that haven't seen some of the updates regarding the SCOP Center to the board and also go through with some of the most recent updates regarding the SCOP Center. So here you see on the first rendering is the rendering of the facility and the venue. So we can go to the next slide, please, Scott. The SCOP Center will be an exceptional regional art center dedicated to stimulating high quality performing and visual arts experiences. And we say regional because we know as we get through the presentation, we have had great success in drawing interest from program partners from all over the region. Next slide. The Urban Renewal Initiative Foundation is comprised of a board founded in 2012 for the purpose of blight removal in the vicinity of Detroit Merit Charter Academy. And it also is noteworthy to point out that Carolyn Paul Scott, in addition to all of the philanthropy that they have provided throughout Metro Detroit, has committed over $3.5 million in scholarships to the Detroit Merit Academy and continues to support those programs for children to attend schools, private school, high school, and annually about $400,000, which is a remarkable commitment to Detroit Merit Academy. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization located in Gross Point Park and is responsible for the construction of the SCOP Center. Here you see the Board of Directors currently. Next slide. The SCOP Center is a world-class performing arts center and will include a 424-seat theater, state-of-the-art lighting controls, audio, stage lighting, orchestra pit with lift, world-class acoustical treatments, fly loft and backstage area, and it is a $33 million construction project privately funded and will absolutely be a catalyst for the future Jefferson-Chalmers developments. Next slide. This is a rendering of the entrance to the Richard and Jane Menuchaian Art Gallery, which is a private permanent art collection, which will have rotating exhibits, not just from the Menuchaians, but also many other rotating exhibits from all over. And it's temperature-controlled atmosphere for artwork. And in addition to that, we have a remarkable space for community exhibits. We have had conversations with organizations like the College for Creative Studies for alumni exhibits and other wonderful opportunities to feature local artists and artists from all over that will have incredible value for the visual arts component of the SCOP Center. Next. This is another view of the lobby of the SCOP Center that also shows that it has a mezzanine level. And there will be a wine bar. This is where the donor recognition will take place. And this will be the pre-function space for performances for the Girls' Point Theater and wonderful place to exhibit the artwork that we discussed in the community. This is the interior rendering of the SCOP Center Theater, which will host many organizations and performances that we'll get to later. But you can see that that has all of the state-of-the-art components, integrated sound and lighting and acoustical panels all the way down to a starry night. And everything that you see here is very accessible to the stage, ADA compliant, and has a orchestra pit that is adjustable so that when there is an orchestra in performance, they have that space available. And when there is a theater, it can be adjusted so that it is a larger stage and the performers can go freely between the stage and the audience, making it a truly impactful and interactive experience. Next slide. We're really proud of the work that we have done in outreach to programming partners. Again, making this a true regional destination. The proposed community partners that you see on this list is a work in progress. As you can see, there are many organizations that are participating and look forward to being partners with us on an annual basis to fill out a robust calendar. And many of these organizations are from Detroit and have shown great enthusiasm to be part of such a remarkable regional center. And then the long-term performance homes will be for the Gross Point Theater, the Gross Point Symphony Orchestra, Gross Point Community Chorus and the Detroit Concert Choir. And the list is continuing to grow. We're having discussions with other organizations. One of the really interesting components to this is Detroit Public Television is going to be working with us on live streaming performances. We've had discussions with Wayne State Jazz to participate as well. And so as we get closer to breaking ground, we will start to add additional programming partners to this list. But the Programming Community Committee has been working very hard and we will continue to see this list grow. Community benefits. Yep, I'm gonna I'm gonna pass this on over to Scott.
Okay, wonderful. And thank you, Jamie Ray, community benefits equivocally measured in sustainability and reduced carbon footprint. Want to highlight some of the bullet points here that have been designed by world-class teams. Jimmy Ray mentioned the acoustics. In Soft Cost, we hired Kirkigard, as well as from the programming theater partner Schuler Shook. And in addition to that, we've worked with Smith Group as the architect engineer of record. And they have implemented green stormwater infrastructure, specifically onsite bio swales to detain stormwater and slow the surface stormwater from entering the system. One of the things that Dr. Scott and Carol are most proud of is the sewage management. And the facility will actually be separated and connected to a unique and dedicated storm sewer that will be extended in partnership with the city over towards our development. And we will be connecting all the stormwater on all the property within the Gross Point Park city limits. All of that water will be not burdened into the current combined sanitary and storm sewer, but will be dedicated and connected to this newly extended but will be dedicated and connected to this newly extended pipe. I'd also like to note that the proposed lot will also be connected to this. It will be picked up from Lake Point. And both uses will be privileged with this connection point. Historical references, unique. There will be salvaging and reusing of the historic DSR paving cobbles and will be implemented into the project for historical reference, perhaps in the patio. The building features active street front with transparent facades showcasing all the art on display. And it was very important to Dr. Scott and Carol to ensure that the Scott Center development didn't increase, create any additional burden of storm collection, being sensitive to our neighbors and partners in a parking agreement, St. Ambrose Church, based on the flooding events that tragically occurred in June of this past year. Above and beyond the design that achieves code, we hired Wade Trim, an expert in the Southeast Michigan field to study LIDAR technology. And they even emulated a similar event. I just have a sample of the report to confirm that the proposed development would not create any additional burden on any neighbor and parcels or properties as a result of this design. Those are certainly impacts that the design team is very proud of and should be well-accepted by the community. Jamie Ray, would you like to discuss economic and community impact?
Absolutely. So we are confident that the Scott Center will have a profound positive effect to the local business community, demonstrating significant confidence in the investor community, energizing the Jefferson Avenue corridor, adding restaurants, pubs and stores, raising property values and renew homeownership, incubator for new businesses to serve the growing neighborhood, providing a wonderful resource to the regional artistic community, and breaking down barriers and building another bridge between communities, which we have worked very hard toward. At this point, I think it would be good to give a brief update on where we are with fundraising, because there are some contributions, some major gifts that have been received for the Scott Center. We have exceeded $29 million in funding through our philanthropic partners. Of that includes a $5 million anonymous gift from a non-resident, which speaks to the enthusiasm of the community outside of Gross Point Park. We have also received a million-dollar commitment from the Vilade family in support of our DEI initiatives. And I can't stress that enough. The reason the Vilades gave the gift to the Scott Center is because they reviewed our plan for how we are reaching out to programming partners, our hiring policies and procedures, our efforts in engaging a wide range of visitors to the center. And we feel very confident, and as did they, that the work that we have already put in place toward the future is going to play a major role. So we're very excited about the contributions. We continue to get inquiries from private foundations and will continue to raise funds to reach our goal. We have all confidence that we are going to reach our goal, if not exceed our goal. In addition to that, we have worked very hard with our local businesses in Gross Point and in Detroit. And here just gives you a list of the businesses that have shown and reach out to us in regard to their enthusiasm for the Scott Center and how this is going to impact their businesses in particular. I'd like to give an example of one in particular, which is Norma G's. We have met with Norma G's on several occasions and they have stated quite clearly that if it weren't for the Scott Center, they wouldn't have the enthusiasm of being in business right now because they know and see the potential for businesses along the Jefferson Chalmers Corridor. We have incredible relationship with Jefferson East and will continue to foster and cultivate those relationships in that community.
And finally, depiction of the project site proposed. Also, just a photo of the new central future surface parking lot, the relocated bus turnaround. And as I described, the storm, new storm sewer pipe will be extended down through here and over to City Hall where our development site will be connected. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to present this evening, and I will turn it over to Director Seislin. Thank you all.
Thank you, Scott and Jamie Ray, for your presentation tonight. Chairman Hesberg, moving forward, I'm going to go into the agenda item of the MOU between the DDA and Urban Renewal Initiative Foundation. As part of thank you. As part of ongoing discussions related to the future A. Paul and Carol C. Scott Center for the Performing Arts and the Richard and Jane Menuchaian Art Gallery, the DDA and URF through several meetings have designed Memorandum of Understanding between these two parties. The DDA has determined that the Scott Center will provide significant economic impact to Gross Point Park in the region through enhancement of property values within the DDA. As part of this MOU, the DDA would commit to the design approved by the DDA. For those, could you please mute? Thank you very much. As part of the MOU, the DDA would commit to the completion of at the DDA's expense and pursuant to the design approved by the DDA, the surface parking lot between the Gross Point Library and Jefferson Avenue. The goal and intent behind this proposed parking space would provide extended parking opportunities for the Scott Center, City Hall, the Ewald Branch Library and St. Ambrose Church. In addition, future civic events taking place on this property, sustainable measures to reduce stormwater runoff, electric vehicle parking spaces, and reducing congestion on residential streets. As part of this proposed parking lot, I want to provide a good example of most recent civic event that could have taken place over in front of this proposed parking lot. So we just had the winter social that was provided for. And I know Carol and Paul Scott also provided some support through their foundation for the winter social with other donors. We had a business that actually part of the property was gonna, it was gonna take place on their property. However, at the last minute, it was found that there were some discrepancies in insurance and the event organizer was asked to remove himself from that property and keep it not there. That would be Beaumont. And so looking at this moving forward, not only can this be a parking lot that's going to service City Hall, the St. Ambrose Church, the library. This is a potential opportunity for this DDA board that we could hold potentially a winter social event that could be here. This could be a part of a future concert series. This could be something of future farmers markets or car shows. And so I truly do believe that not only is this going to help relieve parking congestion from the residential streets in our civic campus, but this is a real opportunity for this DDA board in the community that we can provide a gathering space that's open to everybody, not just our residents, but to the region in itself. And so I would like for you to think about that tonight before your review and your consideration of the MOU. This financial impact of this MOU, the Urban Renewal Initiative will provide $200,000 to the DDA, subject to the terms of this MOU. And the parking lot cost would be subject to bids and design as per in the, as we go through working with our engineers. Not only would we receive $200,000 from the Urban Renewal Initiative Foundation with the Scott Center being built roughly in Scott or Jamie, if you could correct me, in about two and a half years, somewhere around there for construction?
Approximately, Nick. Yes, 18 months for construction following the completion and relocation to the new DPW building.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I was accurate there. And so not only would we have this potential funding, we're also looking at, we could spread this out over two, potentially three fiscal years of the DDA budget and working with our philanthropic community for not only this parking, but an event space. And so for you tonight, if you have further questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, my recommendation tonight to this board would be to review and consider this MOU for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Nick, I've got a couple of questions.
Please go ahead.
So one of the things that I had a question about was the parking study. I guess I might try to decide where I want to go first with this. So the parking study for the Jefferson Corridor. These, the parking study which took into account the volume of people that are going to be parking in these areas, are these independent of the other districts within our city? I mean, I guess, let me try to clarify what I'm saying. So if we're saying that the Jefferson Corridor hypothetically is at peak capacity on a Friday night or near it, this is just hypothetical. This isn't what it says in the findings. But is that taken into account the other parking in the other areas of the city? This is kind of to, to, to bring up the point that was made by Mr. Donnelly earlier in terms of parking in other areas. I'm just kind of curious and I'll, there's more questions I have after that, but that, I just wanted to see if I'm understanding that these are separate, the studies were done separately for, for each area because they didn't impact each other? I mean, I know we're saying it's two block difference, but I just, I guess my question is outright is, I mean, are they taking into consideration the other areas?
So the best way to answer that possibly, the, you know, there is a concentration of the Mac Caju area of businesses. And this, and this parking study was done really looking at the business districts within the area. So there was Mac Caju, there was the Tifa District, which is Mac, Charlevoix and Kirchville. And then we look, and then the DDA did the Jefferson Corridor. In addition, though, they concentrated on those specific areas of need within the vicinity of the downtown development of 40, Tifa and Mac Caju. So they didn't look outside of just that area they concentrated on within those entities. The Scott Center team, working with them, we had very many discussions regarding, you know, their increase that's going to be in the area and their potential impact that could be on the residential neighborhoods. And so working with the team of the Scott Center, we were able to come to an agreement of having a parking study that was specific just to the Scott Center into what would be the impact that they have, you know, potentially as they are up and running. And so right now, it's estimating that the parking demand of just the Scott Center proper could be about 350 to 400 parking spaces during peak times of the Scott Center. And with the existing parking lots available as well, in fact, during On Street Parking with Alter, Maryland Hampton, there are only about 317 parking spaces available. This means the existing available number of parking space in the area will not meet the current parking demand of the Scott Center. And if a new parking lot is built in this area in front of the library, this would raise the number of available parking spaces to approximately 350, 375. So this would be able to fit the parking demand of the potential Scott Center and the other campus, but as well leave some of that congestion from the residents. And so I hope I answered your question. Be happy.
That answered most of it. And you kind of touched on some of this. So the report on page 38, which is 45 in today's packet, it says that there's estimated, there's going to be an estimated shortage of 59 spaces. The proposed lot is 50 spaces. And I, I think I'm in agreement that, you know, if we build it, we can't have overflow going into the neighborhoods on that side of the city because there's already, it's hard enough to park for people that live in that area in the evenings anyway, when they're coming home from work. But I guess there's a couple of things about the parking lot. I mean, is 50 spaces all that we can do with it? That's the first, my first question. I mean, can we get to 59? I mean, is it possible to get more spaces in there if this was to get greenlit tonight? Can we fit more spaces in that lot with, and part of that is, and one of the things that I'm thinking about is I have a sister-in-law that lives on Lake Point. There is a pedestrian path that's like adjacent to the library right now that goes from Lake Point into basically the city lot, but also the library. Which, I, one of the concerns that I've heard about this is having a parking lot close to a library. And I think it may be important to try to keep that pedestrian path intact if it's possible. Because if you have kids traveling to the library, I mean, it kind of makes sense that you're diverting them from a potential hazard in the parking lot, right? So will that be impacted by this at all? I mean, as it stands now, there's bushes that separate the existing grass lot, which is where the lot, where the parking lot is being proposed and the actual library itself.
If I, if I could, Nick, I'll just address that first question too. The, the agreement specifically calls for approximately 50 spots precisely for the reason you're raising. We're not limited by 50. It'll be a combination of cost, need and design to determine the final number of spots there. But 50 is not a set number. It's, it's an approximate number.
Okay, okay. That, thank, thank you.
And Board Member Wicks, and also to your point, you know, we do have a very talented OHM advisors that certainly looks at engineering and traffic safety concerns. This is something we've been working with them and on the schools, water and sewer. And so as we go and look for a design, you know, before this, as part of this proposal too, this board would approve of that parking lot and the design. So certainly you'll be able to have your feedback and input on that design.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. And I believe I may have one more question. I'm sorry for all these questions, everybody. I'm not trying to hog, hog the time here, but so, and I did see on page 38, they mentioned that, you know, that they're going to keep crosswalks intact and things like that and have pedestrians prioritized in the plan, which I think is good. But one of the things that, that it kind of concerns me a little, so St. Ambrose Lot, right? That lot is a private lot. And I, from what I understand, that there's an agreement with the foundation for the use of that lot during events for this, for the Scott Center?
That is correct, yes.
And okay, okay, that's good. I just, just wanted to clarify that, so.
I know Board Member O'Chad, you had a question.
Um, yes, thank you. I had a couple of quick questions. So would this lot be a free lot for people to park in or would this be a metered lot?
So from the study that we have right now, it was recommended that this would be free on weekends during those events that could be at the Scott Center, but on weekdays that this would be metered.
Okay.
These are recommendations, Board Member O'Chad. So this is something that we can work together and see if we need to amend those.
Okay. And then as far as the $200,000 pledge, did that, was that figure, I know we haven't gotten any estimates yet, but would, if the cost of construction exceeds that, is that coming out of the DDA's budget then? Or who's responsible to complete the lot? You know, noticing in the presentation that there were a lot of great environmentally friendly things that were suggested that would be great to implement, but will probably be, you know, costly to design and install.
So that $200,000 will be provided to the DDA. So that's within the DDA's budget then? And the DDA is allowed to accept donations as well. Moving forward, we're looking at two, maybe three fiscal years that we can also add additional dollars from the DDA budget to be able to assist with this project in addition to more philanthropic funding. And especially if we're looking at this not only as a parking lot, but as a future gathering space for residents and such. And this could be a further discussion. If the city were elect to assist in that process, they could certainly do so. But per this agreement, this is something that the DDA would operate that parking lot.
So if it ends up costing $500,000, then the DDA's budget would cover the additional $300,000 over however many fiscal years it takes to complete the lot then, is what you're saying?
Depending upon if that's the cost and looking at what the potential of it could be, yes, we'll have to look obviously within the budget and see if there's other philanthropic opportunities. and see if there's other philanthropic opportunities.
Okay. And then I guess my last just kind of comment on reviewing this and looking at everything. It sounds like if there's three hundred fifty to four hundred spots needed during a peak performance time, and if I'm reading it correctly from our discussion, we have three hundred and seventeen available. That's a short of shortage of about thirty-three spots that we're looking at. And I guess I have some concerns, part of the DDA. The purpose is to soften the appearance of the, appearance of the commercial area and just taking away a large space of greenery to put in a parking lot. You know, visually on the Jefferson corridor, I'm not sure how that looks. And as far as like a gathering spot, I know that that spot in front of the library, my kids participated in a sports camp this fall through the Parks Department and they had their soccer and baseball camps on that field when the park was, I think, too wet from a storm. So I think, you know, just as it exists, it could potentially be utilized for, you know, community gatherings and things of that nature as well. Just kind of another thought on that, but I think that's all my questions for the moment.
And so to your point to Board Member O'Chad, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna lay out something that I wish I was about five or six years, years old again, because there were some times I was watching over there and there were some kids events and it looked pretty fun. So it's certainly something that, you know, if there's further opportunities. And I know Chad Craig's very talented. He's done a great job with our Parks Rec Department to see if there's something we can do there.
Okay, thank you.
And if I, Nick, if I could just interject real quick, because I think it's important that the overall understanding of the agreement, it was really never the intention that there would be no investment by the Downtown Development Authority to encourage the now thirty-three million dollar investment. And so the, the, the reason the parking lot is, is part of the agreement and in exchange for it, the way I look at it is part of a downtown development authorities, its statutory ability and certainly sort of its mission is to encourage that kind of development. And so I think it's important when you look at it in the context of the legal agreement, the MOU and the history of the discussions is what's the level of investment from the DDA to help encourage the development of a thirty-three million dollar project. And that's sort of how the parking lot fits into this. If you notice in the MOU, like in section J of the recitals, there was discussions of some other more significant investments by the DDA that have come out. So it's a, it's a lesser impact to the DDA to focus on the parking lot than some of the other previous requests. And so that's sort of how we ended up where we are as, you know, sort of some skin in the game, if you will, from the DDA at a relatively small level when compared with a thirty-three million dollar investment on that front of Jefferson. So I, I think that helps understand the legal context and the history of some of the negotiations. So I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Uh, Board Member Richner?
Well, I think Scott is right. I think we should support this project. And I want to thank Jamie Ray and Scott for the tremendous presentation. Personally, very excited about it. I wish we could speed it up. Two and a half years is a long time to wait. I think this project's going to be transformational for our community. I can't imagine a more positive or impactful project for, for this community. So if we can help with a parking lot, I, I think it's the least we can do to get this thing rolling.
Board Member Farhat?
Yeah, thanks. Hey, just one, one note I wanted to make that the Detroit Merit Charter Academy too has a parking lot and that I know that property is also owned by St. Ambrose. I don't know if that's also a possibility for parking overflow to use that lot, especially if school's out or it's on a weekend.
This is something that certainly I think the representatives of the URF will have to talk with the Detroit Merit Academy and see if that's a potential opportunity.
Okay, it might, it may become one.
Any other comments or questions from Board Members? Mayor Hodges?
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. Just to point out the, the importance of working with our neighboring jurisdictions and the like, we've been working hard, as you know, to build solid working relationships with J E I. We're setting up a slate of meetings with the City of Detroit as well, City Managers Seisland. And then also as testimony to how important philanthropy can be to building those bridges. For those of you that don't know, Jamie Ray Turnbull was successful in securing a grant from the A A Van Elslander Foundation to support flood recovery efforts in the Jefferson Chalmers neighborhood. A gift of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase furnaces for many of the households that lost them during the flood. So as we approach the, the cold weather, it's quite a significant impact. And I know our partners there are very appreciative of that. So as further testimony to what can come from collaborative relationships, that's certainly a good example. And I would expect that if we continue to work in partnership, philanthropy will continue to support our efforts and assist in building those relationships too. I also had an opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting of the Jefferson East Hub today in the old Kresge Building, which is great news for the corridor and a restaurant will occupy the front portion of that building known as Detroit Soul. And I would imagine it too would feel the benefit of a transformational project like the SCOP Center as well. So I know we'll certainly this administration, I will be committed to working in that direction and invite you all to be part of that too. Thank you, City Manager.
Okay, I think if there's any other questions, Dr. Hesberg, do you have any further comment? Otherwise, I think if you would elect to, you could call the question or ask for a motion.
Well, you have advised me to give a few minutes discussion of the history of the DDA. If there's time for that discussion, I'd be happy to tell you where we were thirty-five years ago when the DDA started because were it not for the DDA, there wouldn't be a SCOP Center. If you wish, I will do that.
Please go ahead.
Well, I can tell you that my partner and I, Jim Marshall, moved down from Lockmore and Mack in nineteen seventy-two. At that time, the park was in tremendously stressed. Realtors were block busting. There was a clock restaurant across the street from building. It was open till two o'clock in the morning. It was a local drug hangout. What we did was we talked to Chrysler Corporation into donating and a defunct dealership building on the corner of Nottingham and Jefferson. That building had been unoccupied for quite some years and on its second floor, there were a group of hippies who were living that, that they created a huge problem as we tried to remodel the building. What we had done was start a five oh one C three called the Detroit Institute of Ophthalmology, which was interested in education, research and aid to the visually impaired. And when the Chrysler Corporation donated the defunct building, we went out to the local banks and at that time, the park was in such terrible shape that we couldn't get a, a single bank to lend us any money. So we had a defunct dealership building and no money. The reason that it was, the, the word was eventually remodeled is ten of our local citizens each gave the, the five oh one C three, a ten-year, twenty-five thousand dollar loan, which we eventually paid back. But with that money, we remodeled the Chrysler building into an eye institute. And it functioned wonderfully well until August the tenth of nineteen eighty-three, at which time the roof on the building caved in. And after the roof caved in, we had a terrible time getting the insurance company to restore any of the money. But eventually we persisted long enough until they did. At that time, after the roof caved in, there was another empty defunct building right next door to it. It was owned by AAA. And the roof caved in on a Wednesday, we moved everything out of the caved in building into AAA and were seeing patients by the following Monday. But after the roof caved in and we moved into AAA, then we decided that we wanted to build an entirely new building. Near that new building, along Jefferson was the Esquire Theater, a cleaners building, a restaurant called The Old Place. Across the street from that was a funeral parlor. I don't remember ever seeing any funeral at the funeral parlor, although people came and went at all hours of the day and night. So I have no idea what was going in on. The, the, the Esquire Theater was defunct. But the people who owned the theater were so anxious to get rid of it that they had films for teenagers in the middle of the day when we were seeing patients. And the kids would skip school and then they'd catch the patients in the parking lot for, for, for money. The cleaners building then caught on fire and burned to the ground. The old place went out of business. The clock restaurant went out of business. The deck bar, which was two blocks down, had an unusual clientele with very irregular hours. And next to it was some degenerate apartment houses. So over the past thirty-five years, really under the leadership of Palmer Heenan. Palmer Heenan comes in in nineteen eighty-three and was our mayor until twenty fifteen. Under him was Dale Crayac, who was from eighty-eight to twenty nineteen. The two of them were huge advocates of the DDA. Had it not been for Heenan and Crayac, none of this would have been accomplished. So as we see this gorgeous building going up and nobody is more excited than I am, I think we've been talking about it for at least fifteen years, maybe twenty. As it goes up, remember that had it not been for the DIA structure, none of this would have been possible. Now today, Gross Point Park is healthy. People want to live or did at least before the flood south of Jefferson in the park. At that time, you could buy houses south of Jefferson in the park in nineteen seventy-two, literally dirt cheap. I had a house on Tremile and Jim had a house on Middlesex. And the numbers that we paid for those houses would stagger you. But as we build this gorgeous new building that all, all of us ought to be proud of, remember that it was the DADA structure which allowed people like Palmer Heenan and Dale Crayac to lead the DADA in, in, in the entire reconstruction of Jefferson between Nottingham and Alter Road. The bone harding that you see now, the new buildings that you see now, none of that had been possible without the DDA. So as we conclude this meeting on December the eighth, twenty twenty-one, I can't tell you how excited I am personally about the SCOP Center. And I hope all of you will will remember kindly Crayac and Heenan and, and the role that the governmental mechanism of a downtown development authority has played in the, the salvage of the once literally crashing city of Gross Point Park. So that's all I wanted to say, Nick.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Hesberg. At this time, if there's no further comment, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding? So moved.
Support.
Is there a second? It was supported. Then we'll call the question. Nick Seisland?
Yes, Chairman Hesberg?
Yes.
Board Member Asaf?
Yes.
Board Member Corbin? Board Member Corbin?
Yes, sorry.
Board Member Farhat?
Yes.
Board Member Kilgus?
Yes.
Board Member O'Chad?
No.
Board Member Richner?
Yes.
Board Member Wicksen?
Yes.
And Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Now now we're moving on to new and old business. Is there any new and old business?
I had a question about the status of the search for a director for the DDA.
Yeah. So actually I'm looking to set up interviews fairly soon here. We've been trying to, you know, obtain some talent. It is a tough market to certainly get some folks to apply. And so I do have a couple that I'm looking to set up those interviews fairly soon. So right after the new year, probably, or, you know, just right after Christmas.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Board Member Wicksen?
Yeah, I was just wondering what the status was on the federal funding that we were applying for. This was a couple of meetings ago, but we talked about a connection point that, that was never completed for the storm sewers. And we, we talked about a fifty thousand dollar cost. And then we were talking a little bit about some federal funding that might be coming into the park to cover some infrastructure expenses. So I was just wondering if you could give us an update on that.
Oh, yes. So what, what I can do is, you know, presently right now within Gross Point Park, we're about ninety percent separated, I could say. There is a small section right there in front of Jefferson that had, was not separated and, and another section over on Bishop. We do have within the alleys, last night at its Tifa meeting, the Tifa Board actually looked to approve separation of an alley at the back of the new DPW building. And so through American Rescue Plan dollars that we received, you know, which is about one point one million dollars for Gross Point Park, we're currently in a contract right now with a company called Pipe Tech who is televising and cleaning the sewers within all forty-one miles of Gross Point Park. And so they're going to look to find if there's any matter that needs to be cleaned out, any discrepancies within there as well. Part of that funding through the city council was also approved for Downspout Disconnection Program, which is something that will be later introduced as we get passed into the winter months. In addition to the city council and I will be working together in regards to further sewer evaluations and water of, of water lines. In addition to, we did, the city of Gross Point Park applied for a grant through FEMA called BRIC or Building Resilient Independent Communities, in which part of that grant was for looking at the extreme emergency release valve, which has been a proposal, potentially proposed over at the Patterson Storm Station. And in addition to that, this is something that not only have I worked with the other Gross Point communities, Harper Woods, St. Clair Shores and Great Lakes Water Authority, Wayne County and City of Detroit. We're looking at further opportunities and how we can share resources partnering together and working with our federal and state local legislators of approving more funding. There's further federal dollars that should be coming to our communities. And so we're scrapping for every dollar that we can. And as we're looking, as we're moving forward down the road, this is something that the city council and I will be evaluating. What's the best level of service that we can provide to be able to dry out and, and correct for future storm events? Now with the storm events we had in June, it's something that eight inches of rain in twenty-four hours about no one can handle. And even if our community was completely separated a hundred percent, it would not have saved the entirety of Gross Point Park because the rest of the communities around us are not separated systems. So those same communities go into the same lines we do that go down the Great Lakes Water Authority. And so I just wanted to make that really clear to the community that it's, it's something of a very big expense, something that Gross Point Park undertook many years ago. Several of our Gross Point communities are not separated or partial separation of this. So we already were one step ahead of the game compared to our partners. And we're only going to improve this moving forward. So I know I went on a long discussion there, but I hope that answers some of your questions and you know, we're, we're working, we're going to move forward on more infrastructure projects. You watch.
Oh, thank you very much.
Uh, any other new or old business? Uh, with that being said, I'm going to move into public comment, non-agenda items. I have no written public comment and I'll see if we have any hands for spoken public comment, non-agenda. Uh, looks like I have one. Give me one second to share my screen. Greg, if you could state your name and city of residence and Greg, if you could state your name and city of residence, and please go ahead.
Uh, good evening. This is again Greg Donnelly from Gross Point Park. Uh, so I'd like to say that this evening's agenda was misleading and as such did not give residents the adequate opportunity to engage and give comment. Nowhere in the agenda or in the material circulated ahead of the meeting was it made clear that there would be a comprehensive presentation on the proposed SCOP Center and its progress. In addition, after the presentation was made, there was no opportunity for public comment before the DDA voted on the proposed MOU with the URF. Residents deserve to know what is actually on the agenda and to have the opportunity to comment. This is particularly alarming, not only because it doesn't follow the norms of a meeting like this, but because there was misleading information being shared. I happen to serve as a board member of Jefferson East, Inc., as does Mayor Hodges, who rightfully mentioned at this meeting tonight the importance of partnering with our neighbors in Detroit. To my knowledge, the SCOP Center has never even been presented to that Jefferson East, Inc. board. Why then is tonight's presentation painting a picture that suggests the SCOP Center has JEI's partnership and support? In addition, the SCOP Center's design that was most recently shared publicly still needs the approval of the City of Detroit Historic District Commission for parking that would technically be in the City of Detroit. This was on that commission's agenda earlier this fall, and the City of GPP pulled its application the day of the meeting at which it would have been considered. This is important information that this body, meeting here tonight, and the residents of GPP deserve to have. Let me be perfectly clear on this. The URF and the SCOP Center are not partnering with our neighbors in Detroit on this. And neither is the City of Gross Point Park. To suggest otherwise is insulting to our neighbors. Thank you.
Uh, Chairman Hesberg, I have no further public comment at this time. Uh, we could be having some technical difficulties. So if there's any, uh, moving forward, uh, is there a motion for adjournment?
No move.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Most? Thank you all and have a great night.
Thanks, you too. Thank you.
Thank you.